This afternoon. I'm going to start with the attendance around the room. Our attorney, Mr. Torres, is present. Supervisor Hinkle is present. Supervisor Banks is present. Our chairman is not present. She will be here shortly. Supervisor Guy is present. Supervisor Flaherty is present. And our district manager, Chris Schubert, is present. Mr. District Manager, do we have folks who would like to adjourice the board this afternoon?
Well, we only have one speaker card, and that is from Mr. Ted Meek.
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Ted Meek. I'm the vice president of Hampton Park, HOA. And I'd like to read into the record a letter from the president and the board on our position relating to the lake maintenance. The president was going to be here this afternoon, but he was unable to make it, so I will read this in. "On behalf of Hampton Park, the board would like to share our position relating to the maintenance of our lakes. As a community, we're aware that the 14 lakes are already maintained by the CDD. We also realize that there are conflicting opinions as to how the lakes should be maintained based on what is in the current development order. However, the situation today is that the lakes, for the most part, have laterals extending around the complete perimeter, and in many instances, out from the shoreline by 15 to 20 feet, which has resulted from the original plantings multiplying over time, spreading around each lake. We would like to suggest that the laterals be brought closer to the shoreline, be well-maintained and trimmed, so that they do not grow out of control into the lakes. That dead vegetation is unsightly, and we would ask that it be removed as soon as possible. Additionally, we would ask, we would also request that large swaths of laterals not be removed if doing so would result in bare lake banks. We also understand that Aquagenics is responsible for maintaining the lakes, and ask that they regularly spray for the ninjas. In the spirit of cooperation, we ask that the CDD keep us informed of the maintenance schedule and consult with us should there be any discussions on how future maintenance of the lakes in our community might be handled. We are also hoping for regular visits between our two boards to share the information if different actions are being considered. Thank you for your cooperation in listening to those of us that enjoy the view of the lakes in Hampton Park."
Do you stand there and ask, Steve, do you have any questions for the board?
Sure.
Any board member have any questions for this meeting?
Did the board discuss anything? When we took over the ponds in Hampton Park, it was the understanding that our responsibility for lateral maintenance would be to those laterals that are shoreline plants and in the lateral shells described thereon. It has now gotten, and basically what we've just read, the sculpting work has massively changed. Where we were looking at maybe 30,000 millimeter feet of shoreline, we're now looking at a triple bow. That's a lot of extra money. Is the association HOA going to be making up the difference orders or is special association HOA making up the difference in that cost of maintaining that next lateral treatment?
They have not discussed it as far as... Obviously, the CDD gets to make the decisions. But we haven't discussed, you know, how we actually control the water. We have not taken control now, and again, for where our agreement is to do. We have not discussed. 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 We have not discussed.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And also had a nice touch too, because when they had a couple of social events in the evening, they had a kids' section where the Marriott staff was doing activities from six to nine, while the adult sections were going on, so you could drop your kids off.
So what you're saying is, next time you go, you want to take my kids?
You don't see that very often at these events, where they make those kind of arrangements. And it was all free of charge, and that's what a lot of people were doing.
That is nice. Well, should we take care of any other business while we're waiting?
And I'll see where Steven is, but he is available by phone if you want to start those discussions. Kathy, have some things you want to bring up?
Why don't we just start with section three?
Yeah, can we just go into...
Yeah.
Let's just jump to three.
So, stormwater management, monitoring equipment?
Sure, that's item I have. And remember, about 14 months ago, we established stormwater monitoring and rainfall gauges across the system. And this is basically upgrading some of the software and also doing some engineering, because right now, they're getting the flow data just from the water levels, where this is engineering it according to the wears, which would actually give them volume data. And it would help quite a bit from a tech standpoint for the stormwater study that's going on right now, and also help us in their upgrading to the software where the data points are compressed and some of the data management they're doing for us. And it's the same company that installed the equipment, and that they would be coming out and making those. And what I was planning on doing is, we had that little extra money on the convenience cleaning, the bid came in at $125,000, and we had budgeted $150,000, so I was going to take that money out of that line item, since it was directly related to the flowway.
Madam Chairman, I will move approval of...
Okay. Ted's got a second, so go ahead and give your question.
Mr. Manager, when we talk about this software, we usually have to have a computer to put the software on, and we have to have an experienced or trained person to use the software and interpret it for us. Can you give us a little bit of that before we vote on this item?
Well, it's actually, all that data is coming into us right now. It's just a little more cumbersome to get the reports. It's really no different than this data system we're using for the wastewater. It's coming into the same machine.
The one back here?
In the back. And it just makes it a little more real-time and a little easier to manage. But all that data is coming from cell phones that are on those stations. So, the only time we go out is really to check them if there's a problem or do regular maintenance, or, you know, just to check and see there's no problems with them. And some of them are difficult to get to, especially in high-water times. So, that's why we don't do it on an annual, you know, re-basis. Or you could go out and download the equipment yourself over the cell phone. It's a lot easier.
But who is reading the data or information regularly?
It's coming right into ours, and it's stored right here.
But who is reading it?
Right now, we're relaying it over to Tetris Tech for their study.
The only problem is, the water levels have been below the control. There's been no overflow, so there's nothing to read. All it does just shows how high the water is behind the weir. So, basically, it's... Doesn't do us any good. We need to know now that just this past week, with all the rain, the water is topping the wears, and that leads to the question I was been asking. When I was out and I looked at a couple of them within the last two weeks, there was a lot of bird droppings on the deals really bad. To where the solar panels were being obliterated by that white product of the birds. So, I was wondering, who's maintaining those things and taking a bucket of water and soap down to keep it cleaned off?
We have been going out on that side of maintaining it. Must have got a hold of it. One thing too, that we get with that, is the rain gauge data. And it was really interesting, because sometime you'll see these storms that come in, and we had one where the cell came in and it put three inches of rain at the Stony Brook station, but across the street in Hampton Park, it was a little under one inch, which shows the variability. But the data is stored by a consultant, and also comes in here.
Yeah, it makes sense, because last Tuesday, when I came back from dinner, all the way up 82 to Stony Brook and to around the curve, it was pouring down, got underneath the FPL Eastman, basically stopped.
So, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you want to add something?
Smallest piece you...
I'll test everything.
Sure. This came up from a request from Magnolia Lakes for additional treatment because of the algae. We have a regular pond treatment. We had been working for a while, trying the biological agents, and didn't have a great amount of success with it. We curtailed that. So, we went to three different vendors and received three different proposals to come in and do added treatments on that Lake 83 for treatment of that algae on the pond. And one that we got from Lake Doctors at $4,500 is just a standard algal treatment to precipitate that phosphorus, and it just drops it to the bottom. The other two are a little more inventive in that they're oxygenating, heavily oxygenating the water, trying to get some of that nitrate out of the pond, and also do an algae treatment with that. And so, we were going to recommend that we allow Aquagenics, even though it's the highest-priced one, it's the most complete, to see if that has some impact on that pond. It's always been problematic, because there's no water moving in and out of it. And we are, we did make a request to LNR to see if they would push in to that water from... Timber Creek is all been over there so far. They've resisted, because they already have the permit, but we're still talking to them. And that's the last portion of the property they're going to develop, so they may change their mind by the time they get up there.
The proposal from Aquagenics, one thing that I've got a little concern on is the... And I'm for it, but I know one thing, having dealt with Aquaclear before. There's a pretty healthy price on that product. I don't think this quote represents it. I don't think it represents it, so we might want to check that product and see if that is included in this proposal, because I don't believe it is. That price looks... The price looks very reasonable as it is for what it's saying, but the addition of Aquaclear, I don't think that price is in there.
You're saying 18,240 is too low?
If you do Aquaclear, I'm going to say that Aquaclear is probably $10,000 to $15,000 for an application. Better like to check on that, but, yeah, I agree with your findings on that, those proposals and options for working on that went from apples to oranges. Totally different from each one. I would have kind of liked to have seen a proposal where we told them what we want and let all three of them build it. And then if they want to put in an alternative, at least that we can compare the prices of what they do. I did some research into the one firm, and if you want low-ball price and comp, that's the one to go to, Lake...
Lake Doctors.
Lake Doctors.
And what we did is, we invited the three firms in to independently just make an assessment of what they thought needed to be done on the lake, just trying to get three different opinions.
To take the truth, what I'd like to do is have some professional come in that's not associated with a maintenance vendor, and tell us what is wrong with that pond. I'm putting a large portion of my money on the fact that it gets no turnover. It's totally unlike any other pond we have in Holgate Lake. It's at the top of the hill, and barely do we get water heated going out of it. And when we do get to the control elevation, the only water that it's displaced with is the water that runs off the roofs and the streets. We have no runoff. And I think it's killing that pond. So, that's why I would encourage, whether this is $18,000, or it's $31,000, or $32,000, whatever the number is, continuing to spend that kind of money on that pond. We could go a long way to going over to Timber Creek and putting in a pipe and begging them that we'll do the amendment to South Florida to get that pipe over here.
And I raised that in a letter to them. I told them we would look at cost sharing, additional costs they would have on engineering, infrastructure, some piping. So, then I'll continue in pursuit now with them.
Yeah, the 24-inch pipe coming out of their north lake that serves maybe two lakes connected to it, with the control right into our lake, seems to be the way to go. The only issue is, is what is their control elevation versus ours? With that pond, 83 being set at that high elevation, excuse me, because of the wetland, but that wetland's going, it's going to be out of the picture, because the school's going to do away with it. So, that would allow us to drop it, and maybe that drop would be enough to allow us to get the water from their ponds to our ponds and then on down. I'd much rather spend money doing that than continuing to throw chemicals in that pond.
Year over year?
Year over year.
Sure, and that's true. And one thing about working on Timber Creek, it's going to be about almost a year until they get up and they're developing that portion of the property. So, any type of relief from that is still 12 months away. And if you like your suggestion, I could go have, we could do the independent testing and then send out a request for proposal to address it based on...
I Googled, trying to find an expert in pond aquatics with algae problems, looking for somebody that's not a vendor. And first place, it takes you straight to the universities, to the professors. Last thing I want is a research project. We'll be a guinea pig, and we'll be doing more than chemicals. The issue is that there doesn't appear to be an expert out there that isn't an expert associated with a vendor.
Well, that's true, and there may be some availability, because right now, FASD last week was at the Sanibel Marriott, this week's the Florida Stormwater Association. So, you have a lot of heavy hitters and vendors out there. We can look into that, who's out there and ask them.
Is that the Sanibel Harbor region?
Yeah.
Well, we've got a fur retriever. I'll stop piling it to the vendor.
Okay.
I'd like to say go on ahead with the comment and the recommendation on the selection of Aquagenics, but leave that decision to be made upon maybe a meeting with George and several people to just make sure what we're getting into here on this.
And their proposal, which written, does include the Aquaclear application, but it's a single-up on application, and they tell you it lasts about six months, maybe eight months.
My point is, I saw that, but I didn't see the price for that. And when I read the other on the 18,000, I didn't picture that it was inclusive of the Aquaclear application. Just fast experience with that stuff, it's very expensive.
And peroxide base, and the other company was using something similar. I'd be happy to talk to George and get that guaranteed from him, and make sure it doesn't impact the pricing.
No, even if it does impact the pricing, it's a good product. I just want to make sure that we know what we're getting into and doing it, because when you start dealing with that product, at least my experience has been, you're going to pour a lot of money.
And I was going to bring it up under supervisor comments, but since we're talking about Lake 83, I did talk with Danny earlier today to find out if they had heard from Tallahassee on getting this included in the 15 lakes.
I called earlier this week too.
And they just did, they just said 15 lakes in this next grouping, so it can be, they didn't delineate which 15 it was going to be, so we can decide to add it. Just move one out and move this one in, which is, I don't have a problem doing that either. So, I think that's what we should do, and I just wanted to...
So, that our narrative to them, where the application did not delineate pond numbers, it just indicated 15 ponds?
Yes, that's right.
So, the facility plan... Well, that's strange, because the facility plan is already prepared. We've already done the facility plan for those 15 lakes. What we're proposing to do is to do an amendment to the facility plan to add one. So, I don't know how we get around that.
They would just have to submit the plans for that lake.
For that lake, and not give it to...
And substitute it and bid that lake.
So, somebody goes to the wayside. Let that pick up.
Point of order, Madam Chairman. We're getting off of something to touch.
Right.
I want to make a motion for we approve this recommendation with the understanding that our district manager will work with Aquagenics.
Okay, do it in a second.
Just one, but what was the total?
18,000.
18,240.
Subject to red flag.
If I may, also for purposes of the transcriber of the minutes, that the motion is to accept the staff recommendation to award the contract to Aquagenics in the amount of $18,000 to $40 for one year. Is that correct?
Yes.
And to confirm that that price includes Aquaclear?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, the motion, the second is cleared.
I have a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. That's 18,000. How come the other AquaWe controls on 9,000? Would you ask what the difference would be, why Aquagenics is double the price?
That's the Aquaclear component of it, the peroxide component.
Definitely.
Well, keep in mind, one of them was only for three months, and it was for $4,500, so if you multiply that times four for a year, it's 18,000.
I was just talking about that one. I think so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Meeting procedures and protocols.
And this was an item that Supervisor Flaherty asked me to bring to the board for discussion. And there's a history of chapters and rules and procedures and protocols that are out there, some adopted by the board historically, some not adopted by the board historically. And I think Chief Supervisor Flaherty was interested in bringing up Robert's rules as a possibility to adopt. Right now, we're basically working from a single-page procedures and then some historical documents.
Yeah, and along with that, I know there's a separate rule of procedure for the district as a whole, and that talks about meetings, forums, solicitation processes, pre-qualification. And back in 2012, 2013, internally, staff, we had developed a gay services community development district protocol and meeting procedures for the board. There's one that's been adopted for the committees, but there never has been one firmly adopted for the board. And I have copies of that to hand out, so at some point in time, the board may want to have a workshop. And I have copies of that to hand out, so at some point in time, the board may want to have a workshop. And it doesn't, and Misses Clarity may want to discuss about having Robert's rules of orders. And I know we sort of generally use it on an ad hoc basis. This process, again, does not adopt Robert's rules of order, but it does talk about, I'll pass them around.
It specifically said they were not going to follow the coverage of rules of order. I remember Mr. Dora having a long speech about that.
Yeah, and this incorporates some statutory provisions with regards to audience participation. And it talks about timing of speakers and what they have. Various decorum items are referenced in here. So this, again, this may be something for a workshop the board may want to have and hold to have a board set of procedures, protocol, I'll call it.
I was trying to find, find that from Kathy. What are you looking for? Because we have a set of rules and procedures that are, have been approved at board that I think need to be blended with this old procedure of meetings and put it all in one document and this whole thing needs to be revisited. This is old.
This needs to be revisited. I also think that before anyone talks, the chair should recognize them first, okay? I also believe that everyone on the board should talk first before anyone talks second and that no one interrupts them until they say they're finished. And those are all part of Robert's rules. Those are the things I'm looking for where there is a clear definition of people talking without interruption. So that even when it comes to, I'm sure the person taking the minutes would be happy about that. Because then they'll have a clear, that's what, what I'm looking for. That so that, you know, everyone gets a chance to talk and don't have to wait till someone talks three or four times before they talk. So those are the things I like to blend in.
I think we ought to have the workshop then to incorporate both of these documents and merge it, merge them into one document.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, Madam Chair, what I could do for the board is what I could do. I have created an updated revised set of rules and procedure for other districts. And I can blend, yeah, because it's a rulemaking process, I can put a protocol in. Or you can have that as a standalone document that gets adopted separately by resolutions. You don't have to go back to the rulemaking process because it's referenced. And what I can do is board sets workshop, I mean, that, we can have it as soon as you wish because that document's relatively available. And just update it relatively quickly, provide it for discussion purposes and then take direction and then go through the rulemaking process. I think it's a good idea.
I think, my personal opinion on this is I know that this is important and needs to be taken care of it right smack dab in the middle of the budget. So.
Another workshop.
Is that for September or possibly?
But first, everybody needs to get a copy of this to read. My first thing was, is I read it and I'm assuming Tony knew who was the author.
Yeah.
We're in Lake County too. Not talking about.
Total.
The, the thing I have is if you, has everybody read this? Because it mentions a paragraph, for example, I'm looking at A one oh six H, competitive solicitation of contractor communication. Then underneath it, it has specific authority, law implemented and lists all these deals. But for that particular one, which I, I went and looked at those sites and authorities and are not on point. So that, I was confused by this. Yeah, those, none of those are on point on that subject. Doesn't have anything to do with that subject.
So we should, we should.
But the point is, I'd like to find the background on this of where, it came from. Because there's things that, to me, what Kathleen's talking about and this and the little one-page deal we have in the front of the agendas. Blend all that into one rules and procedure.
I agree.
Mrs. Clarity? That sounds good.
And then tie it to this, which is the ethics.
Yeah, one thing I would suggest, and when you see it, the ethics statute, the legislature changes it every now and then.
But say it hasn't been.
I would just reference it and, you know, because they change it. And there's other sections out there and I think it's an excellent idea. Like I said, I have updated them for a number of my other districts.
My point was, is everybody, I think, needs a copy of that document to read, to know what we're talking about and get started. But this document, this protocol was never.
That's correct, it was never presented to the board.
The second meeting in September is traditionally, the second meeting of the month is traditionally our workshop meeting and that would be September nineteenth.
Could we move it up to September first, fifth, only because it's right up to budget and that will?
I don't, I hate to change our workshop. Our workshops have always been the second meeting of the month. I think we shouldn't really gear off of that.
You're not gonna be here?
Oh, I'm gonna be here.
Oh, okay.
Unless something drastic happens. So workshop for September nineteenth, okay?
Who's gonna get the copies out to everybody? I'll be there. I don't need another, I've got one. I'll send those out.
Could I have a hard copy?
Yes.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Aqua, language.
I understood. You probably had a copy of the case.
So request to set a workshop date for the, date of time for the Pond Bank Stand.
And we had the discussion at the last meeting about Pond Bank Stand. There's some recent edits to it and the word direction was, was to set a public hearing and distribute copies of the draft and then get it public on that, so.
So can we do that next month, public hearing at five thirty?
Where you gonna have it? Great. Thank you for having us.
Hi.
That's what you've said before. We never do.
Exactly.
Tell Gateway Greenspeople to talk about the tour, going on their ponds.
Is that gonna set one representative?
Yes. Are we talking the eighteen thousand?
Delores.
That's the, that's the date that I was thinking of. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page with the date.
So can we have the public hearing at July eighteenth, meeting at five thirty? That's how it's gonna be, everybody?
Eighteen.
July eighteenth.
July eighteenth.
Chris, you gonna get that out to all the HOA presidents?
Sure, I'll distribute, put a notice up, put on the website too and make it available to them. And ask them if they want any information, you know, I'd be happy to go speak to them at their meeting prior to the public hearing.
How are we gonna handle people that are coming with council?
I think we'll cross that bridge when we get there, if we, if we even get there.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I agree with the chair and then depending on how the manager presents it, whether or not it's a, it's a change.
Well, I talked about that, I'm talking about the presentation. Council making the presentation on behalf of the Cooper people. No problem with that?
No, I think the chair can, I think, get primers for that as it would have any other speaker.
So we know where Stephen is? He's still on Alligator Alley?
I just got a text from you, actually it was coming from Ocala.
Oh.
And he said he pulled over because of the rain and he said as soon as he could be here, it would be six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Let's go ahead. We can, we can make sure we're.
He says he's available by phone.
Okay, we need him, we'll call him, we'll move back to the workshop.
He's got the number here, he said he'd call in.
So with him being absent, I'll let you go, Chris.
I'll bring it up and I'll just introduce, introduce Mike and let him facilitate it. We can address the issues on the, on the budget. The board would like to address areas where they might have potential changes. And then, of course, the next meeting will be doing the same thing, getting into topic by topic on the budget schedule.
Just a matter of clarification, because somebody asked me, and I couldn't answer it other than the fact that it seems like we give the cart before the horse. At the last meeting, and we've done it this way all the time, at the last meeting, we approved the maximum. But we didn't, and then we're now talking about the budget and the budget's what sets the maximum. To me, it makes no sense. The budget needs to be done and approved such that then it's just a mathematical calculation advised by the ERUs to come up with the price. Doing it now, and if we bring up something now, which I'm going to bring up on a couple of issues that we forgot about, we're going to exceed the budget. So now we gotta go back and cut someplace. So it puts us behind the eight ball going right into this discussion.
Yeah, and that was an opportunity at the last meeting, you guys approved it to, if there's anything to be added, that was a time to add it.
But at this point in time, we're, we're talking about things that were made in the staff changes, which was great. At first time I've seen something like this, this is handy, at least you can see it. But my point is, I'm talking about things that will come up today that were not included in this, that nobody had thought of.
And one remedy we could do would be to start those discussions in April next year.
Or, or the two weeks before the meeting where we set it, we have that discussion to get that number approved such that we're voting on a maximum based upon what we have essentially agreed to. We can always go back and cut, but we sure can't go up. And then at the last meeting, for clarification, somebody said that we had to have that meeting last week to get something into the county.
By June fifteenth, the proposed budget had to be into the county and the city.
Today, there were at least three in the newspaper that are still having their meetings that are in the county. How are they doing it? CDBs?
No, but they may be having their meeting hearing except for the actual adoption. As opposed to this is just approving the budget for purposes of setting the public hearing and setting it to the cities.
The way it looked, it was the same thing we're doing because they had the maximum rate right in the paper. I was just trying to figure out why, why is it, why is the date? So we're set that the date was.
It has to be.
Okay.
Per one ninety, we have to set, we have to approve the budget for the point of setting the public hearing by June fifteenth. And we did it a week ahead this time, so we didn't have to hold a special meeting and in case, I mean, it came up, we had actually. So, yeah, it is June fifteenth.
Continue with the meeting.
Uh, well, if you guys have read it all, I did just prepare a memo for you guys based on the budget that was approved of literally everything that we changed, that we went through and whether reduced, added, increased, decreased. Line by line through each part of the operating budget. This is not capital, this is all operating. I did each org unit, like Waterway, Parks and Rec, everything under our OVO one general fund. Pelican Preserve, their general fund, P-PAC prepares that budget. Phil, can you answer any questions? There's not changed much. Stony Brook, Stony Brook Advisory Committee, what council? They also prepared their budget. It did not change much, Joe's here as well. And then we also, I put in here the enterprise operating fund, all the things we went through on that. There were some good changes in there, so Kenny can speak for those as well. So basically, if you guys have any questions or want to change anything, we can go through and note.
I'm gonna start, I knew Mrs. Clarity. What color would you like to start with first? I'm gonna go to page nineteen of the agenda. I'll start with that one.
And is this out of version two budget?
This is the one that's in the book.
Way to get it up on the screen.
Um, okay.
We need to try to do that.
Agenda page nineteen, yes.
The one that's in the book is the one that's approved by the board and the copy went to the city and county. Thank you.
What page is it actually in the book?
Page nineteen.
Page.
Page.
No, page nineteen.
Page nineteen.
Agenda page nineteen. Yeah, so I'm sorry.
What's the title?
Says operating budget, general fund zero zero one.
Waterway Management, Waterway Management.
Page nineteen, it's supposed to be page eight, it's page eight in the actual report.
If you just have the budget.
All right, I'll give you the other page, because I have lots of little, little things here.
Go ahead.
Okay, go all the ways down where it says fountain, maintenance, five thousand. We do not have any fountains in Gateway to maintain. I double-checked, the last fountain we had was removed, so.
The fountain to school?
That was removed.
That was removed?
Yep, so there is no fountains to maintain.
Okay.
We've just gotten five thousand dollars.
All right.
You're on a roll.
I'm gonna continue, all right, I have here, I, I just, this is just a question that I need to clarify. Litoral maintenance of one hundred twenty-five thousand and paramedic study of a hundred fifty thousand. I'd like to know where those amounts came from? Did you just pull them out of your head or do you have some kind of justification?
The battery battery study, we got estimates from basins and spoke to an ender there on what it was per acre cost. To do that type, so yeah, that's, that's based on. And the littoral maintenance is based on our previous and then plus anticipating adding additional costs.
So there is some facts goes on.
I'd buy that here for it.
Okay, all right, we can go back. To page, agenda page fourteen, budget page four. First I'm gonna start with, in the last twenty months, we've lost twelve employees. Okay, I'm gonna start with that. I don't see why we need the intern for the soccer league. We haven't had one, it's been put in the budget, doesn't seem necessary to me. And I also wanna go down to utility manager. That's an increase of seventeen point two percent in wages. I mean, that's a big increase, seventeen point two, from sixty-four to seventy-five thousand. I calculated seventeen two, plus he gets a car. So I think that should be reduced. I mean, most, most you have here of payroll costs, it includes three percent wage increase and that's. Yes, he gets to bring his car from here home and back. So why do we need a meter specialist? Can I ask that question?
Do you want me to answer the other ones first?
You can answer anyway, look, I'm gonna continue. I have, I have lots of questions.
And under the, under the utility manager, we changed the salary to get closer to market. And when I was actually initiated the utility manager, the starting salary was seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so we were just looking at what was in the market for that level of position in the twelve utilities in this area.
Okay, I just think that still it shouldn't go up seventeen two, seventeen point two percent. Okay, that's just a big, big leap.
Question, Madam Chairman.
Sure.
Chris, just because we have this number in the budget does not necessarily mean that the, that the person who holds this title is gonna get that dollar amount, does it?
No, the, several of them aren't set, like we still haven't filled the public works position or the stormwater specialist position. We're out, we've been changing those positions around a little bit with the description. We have a few people who hasn't worked out and firing them, so those, those remain open. And the position she was talking about, this soccer intern, we're looking at possibly combining that into that Parks and Rec manager dependent on what we found within, you know, what level on that Parks and Rec manager, having them take over the pool, the dog park and the soccer field.
So you're looking for some flexibility in the target.
Yeah, well, and that, and that way we could move that money in if we found the right person. We're really looking at somebody that has turf and irrigation experience besides someone who just, the soccer league doesn't need any help. They've made it out of run their league, it's just facilitating them in the facility. And it's the same thing with the swimming pool, somebody that knows chemicals and operations and maintenance, so. And we could take it out, but that's the only reason it was left in there is in case we wanted to hire a higher dollar person and somebody with a pool manager certification.
So, may I continue, Madam Chair?
Yeah, let me, what about the meter specialist? That's the answer there.
And that's just adding a position to the utility group and working, working on meters. We have Mary's been working on that traditionally and she's been branching out, helping with other activities. Kenny, you wanna comment on that, that new position that it may just be the classification?
Kenny, utility manager. With the, the meter specialist is also to help with the AMI system that we are constantly having to switch out these MIUs. What we run into is that when Leslie comes out with her list, we're getting hundreds of them. And I have to stop and change, stop.
And I have to stop and change, stop what everybody's doing to go out and do it all, to give us, in a timely manner, so that we know what we're, what needs to be changed out. It puts us in a position where we're always behind. So if we dedicate someone part-time to that with a full-time position, you have two people that are dedicated to just doing metering, AMI, AMI related stuff.
And could we reduce that to twelve dollars an hour? I mean, it seems that people have been here longer and get less than that, okay? I'm also going to, that's my suggestion to that one.
Where is Mary? Where is Mary on that?
She's a field operator.
Okay, she's one of the field operators.
Correct, yeah, we moved her up, she started doing additional responsibilities and got out of just the meter business.
So then it's truly a new position.
That is a new position.
Go ahead. Okay, all right, I'm only going to maintain, go back to this, on page twenty, agenda page twenty. I'm going to come back to this page, but I needed to refer to this page, budget page nine, we have a soccer complex janitorial service. Okay. If we had a maintenance person, couldn't they do the janitorial service? It seems to be that our maintenance is not done.
We possibly could, that's a service that we brought on a little over a year ago, and I believe they clean it every night, including on the weekends.
Yeah, weekends was a big deal.
However, because I do know the pool people go and clean the bathrooms in the soccer field and the pool.
They no longer do the soccer field.
They no longer do the soccer.
They empty garbage in the morning, in the dog park. And also the fun part, they leave the pool to come over here and pick the garbage up and they'll clean the bathrooms. And we hired that service because we, you know, on the weekends, there wasn't anybody doing it. So after you have a heavy night with a flag and soccer on Friday, and then a heavy day Saturday, the residents came Sunday, the bathrooms weren't in the best shape, so we wanted to keep in good shape on weekends. And the cost is very reasonable for what they did.
Okay, I.
I just thought it was good, sure.
Remember I said twelve of the, twelve people, we've lost twelve people who worked here last twenty months.
Wait, you said that before, you said we, we've lost twelve people?
Mm-hmm, twelve people have left for some reason or another.
And what about the replaced?
I don't, yeah, but it just seems.
And understand too, it's hard to keep people and you're paying them twelve dollars an hour to clean bathrooms.
Exactly.
Trash all that, so.
All right, Board of Supervisors, I would like to eliminate our Board of Supervisors seat totally, so that we would do this without any money? And that money could go into the budget? I'm just saying that. Okay, that's finished, page fourteen. May I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Agenda page seventeen.